Ready.
Monday, February eleventh, twenty nineteen, regular session at Anamosa City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Kay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried? Four point oh public hearings, none. Five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations, none. Council item, action items. Seven point oh community betterment. Seven point one discussion and possible action on the third reading of ordinance amending chapter one sixty-five of the city code to amend regulations regarding driveways and off-street parking.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by John. And it's a roll out.
John.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty. Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
Seven point two discussion and possible action on grant application to the Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Program.
So, I guess give you an update. You might remember a presentation last fall, Jones County Economic Development Director Derek Loveston gave us a presentation on this grants program. In s- I mean, in summation, basically it can provide up to five hundred thousand dollars to invest in downtown facades. And it would require a twenty, well, two hundred fifty thousand dollar match from the city and two hundred fifty thousand dollar match from the property owners as a whole, for a total of a million dollars in project funds. As far as I know, there's nothing that can provide this level of level of grant input. I mean, it's normally a dollar-for-dollar match, so this is I mean, the dollar-dollar, once you include both the city and the property owners, but normally it's a dollar-for-dollar with the city. Anyway, we had two meetings, more recently in January with property owners, we had good turnout. Don't remember the exact ten December's, but after the meetings, we sent out letters of support and received seventeen letters back representing a total of twenty-one downtown addresses of property owners that are at least potentially interested. I mean, they, we would not require them to sign on the dotted line until we had an actual estimate of what their building would cost, so they knew what they were getting into, but I think it's a pretty good sign of support from our business owners, property owners. And I guess before we really got to the next agenda item, I want to make sure we got any general grant program questions or concerns out there.
So, ultimately, we could be responsible for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We could be responsible for more, but just because we have costs outside of the actual facade improvements. We'd have costs for the grant administration if it was awarded, we'd have costs for architectural fees. I'd like to try to offset some of that, especially the architectural fees, if we could get some community support, potentially from local banks. But, yeah, so our costs could be more than that. I guess I would still say I think it's a worthwhile investment for, we're getting more, more than our, more money than what we put into it, invested from the federal grant.
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
In the two towns I've done this in in the past, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars included architectural fees and the administration, because those are both reimbursable costs. Is that still a base?
Yeah.
So those big things would come out, but you'd still draw it down. I mean, you don't have to.
We could, we could use that, use that money, it just depends on how it breaks down and, I mean, that's less money used towards the construction, so certainly could come out of those funds, that's just a proof we make and how that affects how much work we can do.
Where are we planning on getting this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend towards this?
My intention would be either a local loan or a bond that, again, would potentially, part of it would be paid back through tax increment financing, but that's difficult to say how much.
Is there a timeframe on that two hundred fifty thousand going out? I mean, would it go out within three years, five years? What's the timeframe?
From today? Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be applying till next spring, just because we're too close to the deadline this year. And then I believe it'd be awarded in the fall of next year, and so
Summer time.
Summer time of next, of twenty twenty, and that's probably, I don't, I would guess that's when we gotta put up our money.
So the, the full two fifty would go out at one, one shot, not spread out over a couple of years?
No, and the amount, you could qualify for five hundred thousand.
No, our, our portion of, of the funds would have to be brought forward at once or paid throughout the construction.
Just throughout the construction, just as invoicing comes in, it's kind of like the CBDG now.
If, if we were to borrow it, I think we'd, I mean, we borrow it all at once, and then we just pay it out over the terms of construction, but, I mean, if we had another way to come up with it, then we wouldn't necessarily have it all at once, but.
So the two hundred fifty thousand is out of pocket cash?
Yes.
Not left in kind?
Not that I'm worried of.
Is this a get on board now, or forever it will be gone, or if we would choose not to apply for the fall, it would be available in whatever the next year would be?
As far as I'm aware, I mean, it's available every year, but you never know what's gonna happen with federal grant funding. I mean, it, it could be gone. I don't, personally don't see a reason why we would, we would wait when we've got the interest right now.
You know, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, because we have people that say all the time, why does the city not do something about the downtown? Why are we, why are you guys ignore the downtown? Guess what? We now have an opportunity, we can do something with the downtown.
At least.
And the other flip side of that is, this is the second time in a matter of months that Anamosa has been on EC cog's window. A community that's worth their time and investment, and I think that says, I mean, them are positive things for our community. And the cost of construction is not gonna get any cheaper. Things aren't gonna get any better unless we put forth and take the bite sooner rather than later.
At least one of our interested property owners is looking at a currently vacant building and, and opening a business down the road, so I, I think that, that is exactly the sort of thing we want to see from this type of program.
So if the city partners in this, you, you said, Jacob, that we should have an opportunity at some point to begin to recoup that through the TIF?
I, I think so. I would need to follow up more with our, our bond attorney, but my understanding is that all of these properties are within our, an urban renewal area that we already have in place. So we should be able to create revenue back off of the increased property values. The question is, I, I don't know how our auditor will, or how the properties will be assessed. The assessor will assess the facade improvements, since they're not structural, I, I would, I mean, I don't know. You could look at other counties, but that may not even be telling how our county would do it. So if, if they increase them a lot, that would get back more in the TIF. If they, they don't, then that limits our return.
What, what's stopping people from investing in their privately owned buildings at this point?
Speaking of somebody who themselves spotted a downtown building and invested and made something, not only in a building improvement, but a business improvement in Anamosa, it's scary when you don't have a lot. You can't be one good structure around a lot of bad, because you're not gonna get any value. It's a bad business thing. Had we not made our home upstairs and lived up there, we, we had over two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in that building and sold it for a hundred forty. And it was all our money, all our own cash. And until everybody around you is also doing it, that problem will never get better. We did it for me to have an adventure. The average person who's in it just for the business, it's not gonna pencil out, and people don't do that.
I would add that another benefit of this program is not, a lot of improvements that owners, and not just in our community, but communities across the country, they don't necessarily take into consideration both the historical construction of the building and the long-term benefit for the building and the community, so you see a lot of the historic windows filled in, framed in, which was, or the, the transom windows above the entryway framed in. Those sorts of things are done usually from thinking that it's efficiency, but it, it does, I think, over the long term, have a negative effect on the downtown. And I, I think in some situations, it's not even much better efficiency, so those are things where this program would ensure that renovations done meet the historical accuracy of the building.
Something I'd add, tell someone that one of the reasons a lot of people don't do private investment is that they want to focus on the ground floor, which is where the business is, but they have to fix a whole building, roofing and windows and top lining and stuff, but so they have no money left over to do things like upper story housing. This program allows twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent cost share, giving a lot of owners in other towns the opportunities to focus on the entire building. If I can save money on the exterior, it gives me a benefit to potentially do upper story housing, give me a second level of income, and then they can keep investing in their building. See a lot less rundown properties over time from those that are completely built rather than half-baked.
So Derek, the involvement you've had to date on this, you've seen a lot of positive impact?
Yep, in Corning, Iowa, I think as I mentioned, they, we did nineteen buildings, all, one of them are currently full, and that's because that's gonna move to the biggest building on the block, and so Herb's smaller buildings empty now, but all the rest are full. And then in Osceola, I think they're currently all full, we did fourteen buildings, they're all full, and some did upper story housing as well, because they had the cost share. Not all, I mean, everybody, but overall, it's been generally positive. Osceola did the TIF payback, and the assessor, I don't even, he came around three or four more years after the project was done, and then he increased it, but the city was still, it was a renewal plan, they were still getting the extra increment already, and then from what it was, and then as it approved, they were able to pay themselves back.
And in the nineties, Corning was starting to look like Anamosa. They had a lot, like
They lost two hundred and forty jobs from their downtown, downtown fourteen hundred. All, twenty-eight of their buildings said thirty-three or something like that, it was crazy.
Well, in looking at this, you said there's twenty-one applications, correct?
Twenty-one addresses. I don't know if those are separate buildings or not, because I think from, we have to look at an actual building.
So with that being said, at two hundred and fifty thousand, we're looking at roughly about twelve thousand per building?
If they all.
If they all, if they all participated.
So, so most likely, we won't have all address and participate. We're gonna try to submit the best grant we can. If we have enough left over, we can apply for this again, and in two years, or whenever we finish this project, we can apply again for future funds and get the rest of the buildings done. We, I mean, I don't think we try to spread the money over twenty-one properties.
But it, potentially, it's still.
It's good to know there could be reapplication.
Yes. I think, is it Osceola that's done it three or four times?
I think they're on their fourth round, in Macoca, they'll start their project this spring. They split their downtown now.
Derek, not to get the cart way out of front of this horse, so if we enter in to a second agreement in the future, it's still back to zero for the dollars put in, we, we don't get to be credited for the first two hundred and fifty thousand?
Right, because each new application.
Each one is.
New match.
Okay. Have you got wind of any of these ventures that didn't go as positive?
Some of the early ones were tough, because the state and the federal government had put in as many rules. Iowa's a unique state, because they use leftover water sewer funding that had been returned or not used correctly, and siphoned it off and made this fund. So, Bell Plain did it a number of years ago, their downtown looks great, but they had a cost share match with owners, and they ran into some different headaches. But since they streamlined the process over the last, I don't know, five, six years, I haven't heard of any, but Kendra may know more if there's any over in this region. That running.
Marion got one a few years ago, and I know they drained some tougher spots, I guess, but I, that was Gary with EC cog, he had done that, he's, he did the Bell Plain one, and they did the Marion one. They all usually have some things that come up, I suppose, but the specifics for the Marion one, I really don't have, but.
Well, if we enter into this, you know, it's it's a heck of a commitment on the city's behalf to assist the downtown property owners. I would certainly hope that it would be receptive by the seventeen or twenty-one various owners downtown.
Well, some of the letters we got, where people weren't even at the sessions to hear about them, they heard about it through other side of property owners, and they, we emailed them, or they got letters and stuff and submitted them. So, again, there's a lot of interest in it.
Well, and, you know, the, the other good thing about it, I think, is so when the hospital wants to hire a doctor, and the doctor's like, oh, this is a good thing for me, and him and his wife come here and visit our town, and they drive downtown, we want them also to live in Anamosa, not live in Marion and drive over. When, we need to have our community have more to offer. And it starts, I think, with making it, I hate to say it, but sometimes I think our downtown looks ghetto, and we need to, like, change that.
Well, I really feel it's a community pride thing. If you actually cared about how your business looked and, and how you perceived to your customers, you would spend the money as part of your business model to invest in your business, and whether that's your brick and mortar, or that's how your website looks, if you're a web-based business, so I really feel that the, if this was a good business venture, the businesses would step up and be putting money in and taking care of their own buildings already, so.
So what, what do we need to do with seven two?
We'll need a motion whether to proceed with the grant application or not.
To submit it.
I make a motion, we proceed. If we've got twenty buildings that are on board, I say we proceed and see how far we can get.
First by Betty.
So to proceed means we're committed to the maximum of two hundred fifty thousand. Is that correct?
I, I mean, we wouldn't. I, I think it would be good to commit, commit now, I don't think there'd be any legal obligation, like theoretically, you could get awarded the grant, decline the money, if they pass it to somebody else. Um, but I, if, if you awarded the money, I, I wouldn't recommend declining it.
I just can't believe there's not somewhere that we wouldn't need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars already amongst our city properties.
We have to invest in your downtown. It, it's just communities have seen the repercussion of stepping back from it. I couldn't agree more, Cody. We have our own properties that need attention, as well as other future. But to let the downtown fall apart, I just, I'll second the motion.
First by Betty, second by Ron. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Seven point three, discussion and possible action on service agreement with the East Central Iowa Council of Government, EC cog, for CBDG Downtown Revitalization Program Grant Writing.
Uh, this is just the agreement in your packet to have EC cog do the grant writing. If we are not awarded the grant, or if we are awarded the grant and sign an agreement for them to do the grant administration, this portion of the project wouldn't cost us anything. The only, only situation where we pay for the grant writing is if we're awarded the grant, don't sign a contract for the grant administration.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Kay. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Carried? Eight point oh public safety, eight point one motion approval on renewing liquor license, none. Nine point oh public works, nine point one discussion and possible action on resolution setting the data for the hearing and letting and approving the form of notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, proposed form of contract and estimate costs, and notice to bidders for the wastewater improvements, phosphorus removal project.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Some of, okay.
First by Cody, second by Rich. And it's a roll vote.
Ron.
Yes.
Sorry. Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
I have one question. Snyder and Associates is gonna design the improvement of the wastewater plant, are they the ones that did the improvement of the water plant?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, ten point oh finance. Eleven point oh city administrators report.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to update you on is that we, as of Friday, February first, we did reach substantial completion on the water treatment plant expansion project. Was about a hundred and fifty days past the original contract date. We'll be meeting with our engineers and legal counsel to discuss options for recouping liquidated damages. Any other questions on that? That's all I've got.
All right. Twelve point oh mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Jones County Economic Development met last week and appointed the new officers, they talked about the downtown grant. Yeah, it was kind of weather, you know, the weather's making everything quick and short and moving on, so then were two big events that happened. And then EC cog canceled their meeting because of the weather last week, so.
We went to landfill meeting down, and I guess the big thing out there, they got two new LED lights in. Jake said a lot better, he said probably don't even have to turn half the lights on, so it'll save between the LED and using less of them. So that should move forward. As far as emergency management, nine-one-one, working the new radios for contact between different departments, so they can make it easier to switch to them. Quick meetings with the weather.
Yeah.
Lots of quick meetings.
There have been.
Is that all the meetings? Thirteen point oh public with business with the council on items not on the agenda. Fourteen oh budget work, budget work sessions, yeah. So. Action, right?
How's everybody doing today?
Good, Tyler, how are you?
Okay, I'm gonna start before we go on, I wanna start with kind of our goals for our department this year. So we have three main goals that we wanted to, for our department. The first one is to improve a way to connect with the public, and I think we're gonna work on that with the city eventually with the new webpage, and I think that's in the future. So that's getting the word out and that kind of stuff. Our second is to grow our department to meet the needs of the community in a way that we can kind of fit that way, and our third is to provide safe facilities and environment for all of our staff and people. And so when I was doing the budget, I kind of wanted to align.
Kelly, can you, what was that number three again?
Uh, two. Provide safe facilities and environments for all staff and people.
Okay.
And so when doing the budget, I kind of wanted to align it with our goals, and I know we have we may not get everything, but at the same time, I wanna bring you up to date on stuff that eventually we'll probably have to tackle to meet our goals.
Tackle what?
Tackle our, or to meet our goals.
I thought you were saying two meters, that you.
No, no, the meter goal. Um, so one of the first things, on the first page, the one thing I am, is thirty-eight thousand I put into part-time. In the past, we've taken some out of that line item, but I do feel that's, to put some back in there would help us be able to have someone work with the ball ends a little bit, a little bit more part-time staff, helping with the pool and prep and that kind of stuff, where we kind of ensure.
Tyler, before we get further, he, he's talking on page K three, it's in the bottom right.
Thank you.
And so he's in the admin, he's got four, I think four sub-departments within the park, so he's got administration. And then part-time salaries is what line item he's looking at.
So, because normally it's just you and Shelley.
Yes, so we did know, in the past, we had, before when Scott was there, we basically had four people helping, one to me and Shelley to kind of do it, and so that money would help with some of the help, and then focus our attention on other areas that we need to.
Tyler, so the, the thirty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Unless I'm not seeing something.
Yep.
There was no money allocated for fiscal year twenty eighteen?
No, not in, so in the past, we No, not in, so in the past, we've had, um, we haven't used that line name before. So in the past, we used to have, yes, so in the past, there had been money in, I believe it was like part-time maintenance or something.
Since twenty seventeen.
Uh, but this person will be able to also help at the center, um, and be more active there during the day when we're there, kind of helping with their.
So basically you're re-categorizing because what happened, there was Tyler, Shelley and Scott.
Yes. And they had pulled, it was pulled out three different lines.
And then when Scott retired. And then when Scott retired, it was just Tyler and Shelley. And they've kind of been utilizing their other departments, LCC, um, park and rec maintenance, um.
And ours.
And pool to help cover some of those areas. So this would to substantiate.
So this would be kind of more to kind of.
It would be more delineated.
Yes.
To that department.
Okay, so.
They'd, they'd be hiring that third person.
As we go through this, we should see a, a decrease of part-time.
I, so.
Wages in on other line items?
So if you look at it this year, we're actually, right now, we're over in part-time because we have taken some out the previous year. Uh, and I, that will explain for why we're over in part-time in the LCC staff.
What line, what line?
So that would be. It's under the Lawrence Center. We have forty two thousand in the, um, right now, we're sitting over where we should be in the line item.
It's on page eleven.
So, just so I understand, what's on page three? Is part of eleven two, also, not eleven two, part of three is also part of eleven?
They're shifting some of that cost out of just Lawrence Community Center staff and administration staff, which looks at the whole picture.
The personnel.
Rather than just focusing on the LCC itself. They, they do a lot more than that facility.
So they're taking it from.
Administration's the umbrella.
So they're taking it to the other, so it'll be about the same, right? The budget at the end is the same, we're just moving it from one.
From one area to another.
To another, okay.
The, the budget amount is increasing. I don't wanna be. Se- shameful about that, but, uh. Their cost, I think, is going to be more comparable to years prior where they had more staff in it.
Cause Tyler has reduced some of those numbers since Scott left, in those other sub-departments.
I saw that.
So what basically what they're doing is trying to compensate and recreate that same balance.
And then that would also help us focus on other areas. Cause there's some times when, you know, me and Shelley both would have to go down to the ball fields and do some work because we don't have the people right now to do it. Um, we have some staff, but sometimes it's, you have to go down and.
Your hands on it.
Yes.
And good job Tyler for managing it the way you have been. Cause you've done a good job.
The only other, on that administration page, the only thing I, the only other thing I, on that page is the training and registration. We've spent a little bit more. Um, this year.
Twelve to fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes. Then if you go down to. Page, I believe this is page five. It's under the park maintenance. One, I'm asking for ten, ten thousand, um, in LOT. Uh, we're wanting to upkeep some of the ball, diamond area, St. Pat's. Um, and do some work there, um, and keep cleaning, yes.
Can we go back to page four? Cause I'm missing, so the very first. Part-time, full-time salary was for administration.
Yep. Yes.
Now this here on page four, education leader, parks and rec, park maintenance and development. So does that tell me that these salaries are? The part-time salaries here that we've eliminated altogether? What was, was that for?
No, I don't think, as far as I'm aware, there, there hasn't been part-time or full-time in the parks maintenance. They've, they've relied on seasonal help. That's the park, the temporary part-time. Our seasonal employees that do the park maintenance.
That's separate from what you're talking about.
Right, but I, what I'm looking at is trying to wrap my head around, this was administrative. Now this salary and all of these expenses are just for maintenance only, correct?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
And maintenance is all the.
Yes.
Parks.
The fields and everything.
Everything.
Okay. Mowing primarily.
I know you're, I do this every year because it's broken up into so many different.
Yeah. I've tried to, in all areas, I can't combine stuff, I've tried to combine it so it's not as confusing. We have a lot that were. Um, so that zero nine one zero two, on page five, it's under capital and per, uh, equipment park maintenance. Um, I'm asking ten thousand there. We wanna do some work at St. Pat's and keep cleaning that area up and, um, some of our other baseball diamonds and cleaning them up. Um, I believe just, some of them need quite a bit of work, um. They just are, due to that point where they're starting to, um. They're not looking very pretty. In town, so, they need a little TLC to them.
It's kind of a while since I've done anything like that.
So what kind of plans do you have for?
So St. Pat's, we'd like to put dugouts up there, um, and take out some of those trees and just kind of clear that off. And the trees that are up there don't look very, not, there's some trees on the outside or in the middle, but there's also the trees that run this way along the roadside. We want to kind of take those out and it'll look very good. Um, and just kind of clean that area up. We also want to take that infield out and put lime all on that, make it more of a, more of use for recreational purposes. Um, right now, it's just not very efficient. Um, teams don't like to play there just because of that grass area.
So you estimate that whole St. Pat's project at ten thousand?
Uh, not all that project, some other ball diamonds around with painting and stuff. And some of it might, it might not add up, I mean, if we're able to get some donations for like longer or something, it might not cost that much. Might be able to cut some back.
You guys do get a lot of donations for your areas, which is awesome.
And I do realize, I'm asking quite a bit, and I do realize that the budget is limited, so. There's certain stuff that your attention, you feel your attention is limited, so.
Shelley told you, ask anyway, ask anyway, didn't you shoot?
No. I wanna bring it to your attention, but that's the one that you guys are gonna know, so. Below that, resurfacing tennis court, this is one thing that we've been needing to do for a few years. It is very costly to do so. Um, it's up near sixty thousand dollars, um, to resurface those three tennis courts down on the edge of town. Um, they're getting to a point where they're cracking, where they're, um, crumbling. It's just not a safe playing surface anymore. There are people that are hurt.
They get used a lot.
They do.
I'm surprised how much they get used.
And I have one bid on that, but I wait, I wanna get another bid, um, for that. I'm asking when the prices will probably go up a little bit if, if we longer wait on it, but, um. I don't know for sure.
So. Getting this, venturing off a little bit from your budget, but you, your bids are identifying just the repair?
Yep. They, they would resurface it all, so it would be a resurfacing.
Just cover over the cracks?
So, no, it's, uh, let me look. It might have been a little bit less, but he said to shoot for sixty thousand, so he thought it would go up. So if you're removing the existing coat on three asphalt, um, cleaning and filling approximately fifteen hundred cracks. Installing patches in low areas and helping reduce some of the staining water, installing two coats of acrylic resurfacer, installing two coats of forca- fortified acrylic color. And looking priming and painting. All that would be included in that.
So they would re-line it then too?
Yes.
My concern is going over cracks. And we not identif- identifying what's causing the cracks.
Well, is that the original surface, do you know? Or has it been redone since those were put in?
I remember being done once in probably the last twelve years, fifteen years.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's been done since I've been here.
They took the fence down at one point.
Right, they did, they, um, did do some repair on it, but I don't think they did a full.
Full resurfacing?
Resurfacing.
I just remember the fence being all.
Yeah, there was, there was some repair done at some point, but it wasn't a full resurfacing.
Yeah.
So what does he think though? Did he tell you the life expectancy out of it then after that?
I didn't, and that would be something I could look into more, um, along with. Other questions, if we had other questions, alright?
Yeah, cause those courses.
There's a different type of, I know there's a different type, there's like a tiling system, places of use as well, and I don't know if that's better or worse in this type of weather in Iowa.
I don't know, but I think those things have been there, what, thirty four years, thirty five years?
Minimal maintenance?
Minimal maintenance, yeah.
I mean, you take sixty thousand dollars and pencil it out over, you know, in, in a sense, twelve years, if that's when.
Mm-hmm.
Hit, hit, you might wanna start budgeting, find six thousand every year. So you don't get the sticker shock of sixty thousand?
If it's used a lot, that's half the, that was my question.
Well, and here's another, a, a new, um, a lot of people like to play pickleball now, and so they did research to rebuild and, uh, put a pickleball court in as well, pickleball lines that could be used for not only tennis, but pickleball.
Some of these big ticket items, just going off what Rod just said. If we know there's an expense coming up like that, can we put money aside in a fund? Like we do with the fire department for a truck fund?
We can, but Mayor says that hasn't been the pat, uh, the practice in the past.
We just wait till it breaks and then pray it rains money.
Well, it's not always, uh, it's, it's easier said than done as well, just because, I mean, hard to set funds aside.
You just.
When you have, you know, expensive piling outs that you're, you're, you know, sometimes you're trying to plug one hole and then, you know.
Yeah, you'd basically just leave the money in reserves. Your cash balances are your bottom line. So if you don't use all that LOT money and you've got that sitting there, you know, and that's like what Jacob and I looked at. The total LOT poll from all these departments, we're still gonna end up on the positive. Not a lot.
But it's not like a, it's not, so let's say Tyler's fiscally responsible with his budget and he has twenty two thousand left at the end of the year. That's not going back into a Tyler account, that's going to a general fund account.
No, it goes in, it's general. That doesn't happen though. Nice, nice try though, but. No, not, not, not in those departments. They don't, they don't make money.
Well, and that was a question.
But if they had a, like, we need a pool.
Yeah, but they don't.
So.
Yes.
Instead of doing a bond, why haven't we just been putting?
General, but his, but his departments don't come out in the black, ever.
Ten, twenty thousand a month.
Pool is no. Administration is no, because there's no revenue coming into administration. LCC is no. Um, because of the investments and the cost of that business. Park and recreation programs are borderline.
We can do, we can do with fire.
Park and rec should make.
We can do with fire, but we can't do with parks and recreations.
You can, but there's so many other polls from general that it's just like the police department and our department.
But can it be done?
Sure.
Or is it just difficult for you to do it and that's why we don't do it?
No, we can do it. You can do it, it's just that.
Okay.
It's just that those departments are never.
Because when we started talking, you were telling me, no, you can't do it, but now we're talking, we can do it.
Those, no, those. No, you can do it. Sorry Cody, those departments just don't ever.
Have the money.
Make money, they never, they're never in the black. That's what I heard. Just like us in the tweets.
Right.
You have to have the money this year to put away in the first place, that's the difficulty.
Right.
The fire department's a little different because of the twenty eighty agreement. So that is in and of itself different. But the rest of the departments in the general fund are not revenue generating departments overall.
Sure, if he had twenty five thousand dollars left.
I wish.
But by the time all of his line items get down, it's.
So I'll do it. You can do it though.
Right.
Zero.
You can do it, but you wouldn't have anything to put in it every year.
Cause there's.
The flip side of that is, does that mean if he does have extra, we put in it in this little account and next year he runs short, does he pull out of that account he just put in?
Yeah.
Well, I just see it as an incentive to have department heads manage their money better.
Oh, I agree.
Yep. Yep, I think that's a great idea. But that department is a draw for the community, obviously.
Yeah.
Having a community center and pool.
Okay, sorry Tyler, go on.
Program supplies under, this is, um, page five. So what I did there is I combined what we had in a program equipment and program supplies to sort of do the same thing. Let's combine those two lines.
We're looking at page seven.
Page three.
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
So which one was that?
Uh, so what was program equipment, I just combined program equipment and program supplies together.
Oh, I see, okay.
Sort of do the same. Under the aqua court facility improvement, I don't have a page number here.
It's eight.
Eight. I'm asking twelve thousand for a study on aqua court, um, that could be, one company's lower, um, that I talked to.
Yeah, that's on, that's on nine.
Um, the other company said it would be right around twelve thousand. You went with them. One has a tie, one doesn't have a tie. Um, I've heard good things about a company, I've heard bad things about that one company that doesn't have a tie, so, um. They, the other one thought twelve thousand would be safe for the study that would give us, our pool is thirty years this year and the average life is about thirty years. Um, and I feel like it's that time where we have someone come in, kind of evaluate, see where we're at. I don't feel comfortable myself saying I have an idea, but I don't know.
Makes sense.
It's not getting old.
So if our weather continues, the seventy thousand you have right now for payroll for the pool could lessen if we don't open until.
That is very true.
So you could save some money there.
That is true.
So this twelve thousand that you're out, you're looking at, how?
Yes. Yes.
How's that gonna go in conjunction with the early refurbishing or? So this twelve thousand that you're out, you're looking at, how, how's that gonna go in conjunction with the early refurbishing or? New Aqua Court? That, uh, they presented this past, was it this past summer?
So what they would do, both companies come in and before we went with that company, I'd have them present to the council. Um, and then we would make the decision there which company we want to go, so if we did go with the li- the lower, then we went with the lower, I think you've had with them for five years. Um, that was Bervac, and that was going with that company. Um, the other company, there is no tie, but they go through and they would evaluate at the start of the season and then they would also evaluate at the end of the season. And then they give you a report on what their findings at the end of the season. At the end of the season, then they say, these are what we suggest that needs to be done, um, near and future.
Okay, so.
To sustain the life.
That, that analysis?
Yes.
And recommendation, is that the twelve thousand dollars?
Not the presentation, not, not for them to come and present to the council, it would be them to.
For them to do the study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what would be included.
But the tie you're saying is that in the next five years you build a pool, you're locked in with going with them as your engineering firm or your architect?
With that other company.
Bervac was that way?
Yes.
This other company that you're making mention to?
Was not.
You can, they can conduct the study and the analysis, provide you with a report.
Yep.
And, no future business has to be locked there then?
There was no. But I would have both companies come and present. Recreation equipment, A, this is under.
Um, cemetery management, part of the.
We already did that.
The cemetery management falls under Greg's budget, it's, so we've, we've addressed that then, but it's just part of the program four.
The state.
So, so there's, we've organized budget by program, they just have a state works a thing. So it falls underneath the program for education and leisure, um, but from department standpoint, it falls underneath Greg's responsibility.
I don't like that, I don't wanna hear.
Well, can you take it up to the state?
I know, neither do I.
That, you know what I'm saying, that.
That was the one weird thing when they reorganized it about, you know, twelve years ago, I think they reorganized it.
Okay.
Made it until those programs, it's frustrating.
So.
Trying to, this might be page eleven, recreation equipment.
Yeah, is that under the L C C?
Lawrence Community Center.
Yes. Yes, I put thirty-five hundred in.
Page twelve.
Yes, we want to get a new machine in, um, for our center, our machines are starting to be upgraded. Um, we feel like it's important that we continually upgrade our facility in order to continue to be a draw for people. Um, this last year we had one of our, um, percumbent ellipticals that went out unexpectedly. Um, and a lot of people use that machine for, um, knee recovery, um surgeries and stuff like that. So, if we don't have the machines to draw people, then I can do membership, it's not gonna cost us. And then below that, the eight thousand there, um, our windows are starting to, um, they're starting to rot on the interior of them, the lower windows. Um, I got a couple bids, both of them ran around eight thousand dollars, um, for, um, the lower windows to get them to keep windows. Um, and there's, and if we, like I said, if we don't, if we can't get all this money, there's ways we can get around some of that yet. We can do patchwork outside the windows and, um, make that work yet, um, but I, like, I just wanna bring some of this stuff to your attention.
What was the eight thousand for this year, Tyler, I don't remember?
Um.
Was that for the air, or the rock and roll courts or, I can't remember what we were, I'd have to look at my notes, I'm sorry. I can't remember, I know you were doing some improvements, but.
Can we go jump back up?
Yeah.
Um, you've got combined with line?
Oh.
Two, three, zero, zero, five, two? At the top of that, page twelve? Kinda in the upper section?
Okay, I see where you're talking.
You've got fifteen thousand five hundred. And last year you had a budget for eight thousand five hundred, but then on line two, three, zero, zero, five, two, you had zero.
Ooh, I, might have, maybe I don't know what it's.
So.
Don't think that's right.
Wasn't two, three, zero, zero, five, two immediately above?
Five, two years, it should be.
No.
Nope.
It's, it's, you skip up one more.
Cause we're combining grounds and building maintenance with structural insurance, correct?
Well, it's, it's maintenance contract with, with maintenance.
No, it's contract, it was a little bit contract, I don't know why.
The difference between those two line items, maintenance contract is for contracted stuff that you pay on a monthly basis. Such as your, uh, pest control with plunkets.
Yes.
Anything that's a maintenance contract that you pay on a monthly basis, that's what's in that two, three, zero, zero, five, two, that's what should be in there. That's the difference between those two line items, and then the, uh. The, uh, two, six, eight, zero, zero, zero is for unexpected things for building maintenance stuff that you don't contract for. That's the difference between those two line items, how you use them is up to you. But that's what the intent was when those line items were put out.
Okay, so you've got a seven thousand dollar increase from your budget from last year?
So I don't, I don't know what I was thinking.
I don't know if that.
But keep in mind, he's got twelve thousand forty dollars under that two, three, zero, zero, five, two, already has the end of December or November. So I'm not sure what you're putting in that line item.
Yeah.
Basically, it's just to take care of your building, planned and unplanned.
Well, and I don't have a problem with that, I'm just.
Right.
Was there some expectancy of some major costs then for repairs maybe this year, for maintenance?
I don't think in terms of that, I don't, I think I was confused, I was.
Well, if you look at eighteen, there was only ten thousand between the actual and those one items, so fifteen might be a little up.
Well, and, and in seventeen between the two, you're at a flow over eight thousand.
Yeah, so it's almost doubling.
Yeah, it might be a little high. Might be a little high.
So if we break it down a little bit?
I mean, I, I can look at those line items too, Tyler, and help you figure out what you've been expensing in those. Well, I, ten thousand would probably be more accurate. Unless you have something that you think is gonna happen with the building. Could be anywhere from your water fountain, your drinking fountain, you've replaced those before. Heating, cooling, any of that.
Why don't we just leave it for now and then look back at your notes and see what you had planned in there?
Yeah, if, if you've got some, something that you're thinking about, I'm good with it, I just was asking.
Tyler, just to help that you were, aren't there some doors that you were looking to have replaced?
We were at one time, um, but then we were also talking at one time about a new type of system, um, a little bit with Jacob. Cause we didn't wanna have those doors replaced yet until we know what we're doing there.
Okay.
While we're on this, uh, part of his budget, I just wanted to bring your attention, uh, it's not on, on the sheets, cause this is expenditures only, but, um. In the past, we've looked at just the, uh, primarily the L O T. And hotel motel and general fund, property taxes that fund this department, but there is a levy for city owned civic centers. That has not been used, a lot of, I mean, not a ton of cities use it, but it's available and, uh, it's not a huge amount of money, I think it'd be about seventeen thousand dollars. That I, I would suggest we start using that, um, tax levy.
And that doesn't have to go through the vote of the citizens, you just do it.
It does not require a vote, um, it's just a change in how you fill out your, your, uh.
Property tax request.
Budget, budget form, and, uh, with, I mean, the windows on here, I know Tyler has talked to me, it's not in here, but. The age of their furnace is getting quite up, quite old, um, there's just gonna be, um.
Things that.
Ongoing maintenance that we have to be planning for now, and I think that added amount of money, uh, can help us be more sustainable. Rather than just playing catch up.
I think that's great, go for it.
What type of, what levy was that called, do you know what Jacob?
I have a question, who does the cleaning in the Lawrence Center?
Yes. So we have a couple janitors, um, Joe Mac and Sarah does nights, um, on a Thursday night, and then John Burks does, um, for weekend shift.
And they.
And then we, um, along with that, we Shelley, and we'll do some other stuff, um, as well.
So when there is, when they're in there at night, is that when, like, the weight room and the exercise room and the locker rooms are getting cleaned?
Yes. Sometimes during the day, or at times, and then do something, or do that.
When you're bored, you have nothing else to do, Tyler.
I've got one more question, not necessarily on your budget, but with, um, the Jim McDonough concert?
Yes.
How did that turn out and how did that affect your budget?
So, not as well as we'd like, um, so it did affect it a little bit, um, but we are looking at going a different route this next year. Um, with somebody a little bit cheaper and someone that would have a little bit more appeal, um, broader range, age group that would have a little bit more appeal, um. And do it up on a little bit more, I guess it would be a little bit cheaper as well.
That's great. Well, and I heard people who love Jim McDonough, who's gone and seen him two or three times, say, I just didn't wanna go see the same thing again this year. So I think that's great.
There's a really great opportunity we have in this community, we should be, uh, presenting that to people, I think we still can.
Gonna have Taylor Swift or?
Well, I don't know. We're trying to get the police department to show up and do a little game, but.
Hey, there's some pictures of those guys on.
You know, oh, was that you?
They do have the fo' moni going on in theater Cedar Rapids.
I thought it would be a good job, but.
We could even make a challenge.
I think so, we know the budget's tight, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks Tyler, I have one.
What, what would be, as I'm trying to figure through this, what would be the park's overall budget?
Parks in general or?
Yeah, well, everything, we just totaled everything up that we went through.
You'd have, you wanna add up parks maintenance, there's park maintenance.
So the other departments, it, it did that for us, but this one we can't, okay.
And there's the recreation, so there's, so you wanna look at the four, zero, four, one is park maintenance, that's to maintain the field. And then the four, zero, four, two is the programs in and of themselves.
No, I think what he's asking, I, here's what I'm hearing, is that this seems like one big budget that includes the bottom dollar, includes the library. The parks and the cemetery, and he's asking only the bottom dollar for parks.
Yes.
Yep, so if we look.
We did the streets, we did the water, we did the wastewater, you get out into, in a sense, the last page.
So you're lucky.
And there was their total budget from past years and requests proposed for.
So Tyler has L C C?
I understand that.
If, if you look at the last page, page sixteen, it breaks it out by the different activities within the department. Um, you'll have to add up specific ones, I've had it up for the twenty twenty proposals, but it's, it's essentially parks and recreation administration, parks maintenance. Uh, the recreation programs, Aqua Court and Lawrence Community Center, and for twenty twenty, that totals at six oh nine, six hundred nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. I don't, I don't have the totals for the past years, but we could get that information if you'd like.
Yeah, you just have to separate.
Is, is there a way that that can be broke out, total separation?
In the past, they have been, haven't they?
I thought it was.
I don't recall the budget ever being all three of these in one packet before.
We, normally I don't print the cemetery. Jacob has a different system for the spreadsheet, so that's why the cemetery got included, but normally you would just see his departments. It's just that he printed it by program rather than, which is a state.
Which is fine, but I'm saying in the past, we've never had them all together.
No.
Alright.
No, because I've just printed the sheets that are relevant to the departments.
So under normal, like, I get it's snowing and the guys are gonna be out in a couple hours plowing, but would normally for this one page cemetery? Would Greg be here for this?
No, we, 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 we included that when we discussed the street budget.
Okay.
It's just that he's printing it out.
I just included it because the way, the way I put these onto a PDF, I couldn't set.
Separate.
Separate stages specifically to that one.
Got it.
So, it was just easier to include it.
I know, ignore it, have you seen it already?
Because what, what we used to do was just do paper copies, so we didn't, Jacob was trying to create that email copy. That's a little bit different process than just the paper, so that's why it all got included.
You feel like you're not gonna ever make all of us happy?
I mean, just when we go to approve this for the final, I would, I would like to see the parks separate. The, the library separate, so I can take a look, scroll across what has been budgeted and spent in the past. And what the increase or decrease for the proposed.
If you look at that last page, like Jacob indicated, you can kinda see those departments, that's probably the best avenue at this point to look at.
Does it work if it's just on a total department by department?
Yeah, yep, it could be on, something separate.
Yeah, yeah, bottom one.
I just going through and, you know, kinda what stuck out was a sixty-one thousand dollar add-in, a twelve thousand dollar add-in, a thirty-five hundred dollar add-in. But, you get to the end, you should be taking out thirty-three thousand because it was cemetery related.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a tracking thing.
Costs money to keep those facilities up.
Gonna hurry.
Um, so before I get into the, the details, basically, um, the library's goals this year boil down to three things. Um, overall, we want to provide, um, quality services and programs to the community. Um, and this year, the increases you see, um, on our line items are due to wanting to provide, um. Have, be able to recruit and keep quality staff, um, essentially keep our building open and functioning. And, um, getting the word out about what we offer, um, so the increase for staff, the library board actually put in a four percent increase for the library, um, staff wages. The, uh, keeping the library, uh, building functioning, uh, is the replacement of a geothermal unit. Um, and yes, that is, there is, I think it's the one item, is it? It's page two, according to what I have, line item, forty-five hundred, um. Uh, that is the cost of one geothermal unit, um, replacing it.
Did you get a couple bids, just ask it?
We, we can get more, yeah.
Two for sure.
We just, we needed to know, um, what was going to be, um, to fit in our, our, our budget.
Is Lynn still on your board, Dishes?
He is, yeah. Um, so basically, we have, we have three units um that are either fully down or almost all the way down. And there's somewhere in the mid-teens of geothermal units in the building. Um, and they are now all fifteen years old. Um, and so the board has been having a debate of, well, do we start replacing them now? Or do we wait till we have a critical mass and we have to replace them all? Um, and the current um thought is we should start replacing the ones that are broken or half-broken um before we have a major problem on our hands. Um, the under, on that same page, under capital improvements, is our current um thought for getting the word out there. We would like to um buy a digital sign. So if you can imagine the the library have a limestone sign at the corner that says Animal Survival and Learning Center. Um, the plan would be to get power out to that corner um and put a digital sign there where we could just have a couple of lines saying, you know, children's program at the library tonight at five, or um something along those lines. There was talk about maybe putting, city declares snow emergency. Um, that we could do that, um, the the signs that they have now, you would be able to wirelessly change. Um, so if there was um maybe a a water boil order that came out um at a time when the library staff was not at the library, there is still a possibility that if we got contacted, we could add that to the sign.
Or somebody from City Hall could just do it, like Jacob, like isn't it just logging in with a username and password sort of thing?
So that was the the thought that we we could offer that since it would be so easy to change. We wouldn't have to put on our boots and walk out in the middle of a snowstorm to to add that onto a sign. Um, so the idea for the digital sign is that we would hopefully be able to get a grant for that. Um, if we could not get a grant for that, as because we have been trying for a few years, um, that the uh the library has some um funds that were were donated to the library many years ago. And the idea would be that we would um then fulfill that particular um capital improvement need with um some of those in um funds that we have that were intended for capital improvements at the building.
Is the sign you're looking at readable from both directions or is it only one-sided?
It would probably, I I think it's just one-sided.
Okay.
Oh.
So it would face the.
You wouldn't read it from the parking lot just from your.
It would be third, third street, Scott Street.
Right. Right, it would be facing the intersection, so you'd be able to read it from there.
Talk to me.
Okay. Um, there was one thing I noticed while I was sitting over there, um, on page one, under personnel, under the workman's contract insurance, um, I didn't catch this before, but I had actually put in, I think a seven percent increase over the actual spent in twenty eighteen. So I thi- I had four seventeen and.
I put in the actual numbers.
Oh, you you put in the, okay, all right.
Yeah, I put in the actual numbers based on our two-year, yeah.
Perfect.
Yep, so our workman's count, we'll go down hopefully, that's a good.
Okay, okay.
We'll see. Keep your fingers crossed.
All right. Um, and if you have questions about the health insurance line, we did have um change in staff in that side of that line, even though there we put in uh, or we are figuring a seven percent increase on the actual health insurance cost numbers, we have different staff. And because of our new insurance, the things are all different.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Okay.
That's why there's the increase, but it's a, looks like a decrease. Any other questions I can answer for people?
So, um, and I know I bring this up every year, but has the library had programs or anything they have done in the past year where they've been able to like the LCC charge for and create some kind of revenue?
We do charge for some programs. Um, at the moment, we we charge for, uh, the intent is to cover food costs, especially for serving a meal. Um, so for, we've been having trivia nights and we were providing pizza, and so we charged for that. Um, you and I are always gonna have this discussion.
I know.
I personally believe on that library programs should be offered freely because, uh, especially if we wanna be teaching something because um libraries believe in tearing down barriers between people and services, and an economic barrier is still a barrier. Um, especially for, well, for those who can't afford it, you know, they may be, they might be the ones who need that class the most. Um, and I'm actually uh excited, the State Library of Iowa, they have to go out to bid for the um online resources that they offer to libraries um every, I think maybe three years. Um, and in the past, we've been offering something called Learning Express Library. And it offered online classes for um Microsoft Word and um other online um programs. They asked librarians what it is that we thought our people needed the most, and we said, I need job help.
Yes, resume writing.
Right, um, and so they, the state went out to bid, and now we have a new um service that actually launched today. So you could go on our website and see it, it's called Brain Fuse. Um, and we have two services from Brain Fuse, one is called Vet Now, as in veterans now, and then Job Now. And Job Now offers um resume coaching, cover letter coaching, and interview coaching. So they, there's actually the opportunity to connect with a tutor online.
That's awesome.
Yeah, very, I'm very excited about it. It still offers a lot of the stuff that Learning Express Library has, so I'm thinking that um now we can start offering more of that stuff um at the library, so.
And the increase in wages of of four percent, um, are the hours at the library, are you open any evenings?
What do you, we're so, we're open Monday through Thursday from ten until seven P M, is that?
Oh, seven P M, ten to seven, okay, and Saturday from ten to three, is it?
It's ten to five on Fridays, um, which just breaks some kids' hearts. They wanna play on their computers until seven, um, and then ten to three on Saturday.
But it really shows the need for internet availability for kids whose parents can't afford it.
So we uh, we pretty much have a um a revolving door of kids um after school using our computers, um, pretty much up until closing.
And then they park in the car outside with their parents.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I am surprised how many cars I see, I've seen cars out there at four-thirty in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Accessing the internet at the library.
Thanks Rebecca.
Oh, I have one thing.
She didn't move fast enough.
Sorry, I gotta work on my. So I have heard wonderful, wonderful, wonderful things. I know the red issues are gonna be hard to fill. But the new children's librarian that you have hired, everybody loves her.
Great.
Are you, that's all going well?
Yes, it is, it's going very well, yep, um, she's got lots of energy, um, and, which is always a good figure in children's library.
Yes.
She's got plenty of energy, um, and she's um also increasing the amount of teen programs that we have as well. We have a teen advisory board and um they're helping plan their own programs, they have some invested in that, um, it's really great.
That's what I heard about it, was with teenagers, so, that's awesome. Good job.
Yeah. I'll pass the.
Yeah.
But again, Jacob, you could separate all that library out so we can see if there was an increase or a decrease?
I will uh make sure we have, you know, easy broke-out department bottom lines for you. Uh, the library is a little bit easier just on, cause it's got the one category, so their bottom line is. You can see on that last page how that's changed for them from uh, five, eight thousand more than they adopted last year.
Okay.
And then you can compare to half the actuals, but.
I think the actual.
But I I will break it up for you.
Don't worry.
The actual that, or um, rather do the rapid because it may.
Yeah, I forgot. Yeah, if 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 you look at their projected revenues, that nineteen thou- or that, was it nineteen or fourteen thousand?
Uh, it was nineteen.
Nineteen, so they're of that expenditure, they're gonna get nineteen thousand in between grants and other funding.
Five, seven.
So technically, they don't go up. Bottom line to the general plan is what they're probably looking for.
Eight thousand dollar, there's a twenty thousand dollar.
Any other questions on budget?
Fifty dollar adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?